Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 8th legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. I would like to call the meeting to order. I would also like to welcome everyone. I have a brief safety announcement. If there should be an emergency during the meeting, we should ask that you leave in an orderly fashion from the council chambers. Make a right-hand turn, proceed straight down to the end of the hallway and exit by the way of stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, make a left turn and then make a right turn to the end of the hallway and proceed downstairs. Remember, do not use our elevator during an emergency. I ask that we please rise now and join us for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We will have our invocation by Reverend John Wright, Unitarian Universalist Fellowship at Salisbury. Thank you.
Thank you, friends, and thank you to the council for inviting me once again. I invite you to please join me in prayer. Holy One, Yahweh Allah, Thou known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on these servant leaders who have been called to lead our beloved city, this community in which we live and work and play. And more, we ask for blessings on all those who serve in the many ways that make Salisbury a place we're proud to call home. Help these leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? To whom do we need to listen? Let them never forget that they are not only leaders, but also servants, whose responsibility it is to serve the common good. Help them to be ever mindful that everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Christian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh or atheist, is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind or spirit, the strangers and the immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the strength, wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true, and most of all, we pray these things in the name of love. Amen. Amin, and may it be so.
Thank you. We will now have a proclamation presented by Mayor John.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Whereas on April 20th, 2006, George W. Bush issued the first presidential proclamation to designate May as Jewish American Heritage Month. And whereas the history of the Jewish American is one of racism, bigotry and injustice, it also includes stories of faith, courage and growth. And whereas Jewish people from all generations have come to our nation to escape discrimination, oppression and persecution, to find a better life for their families, and whereas they have played significant roles in civic and community life of our nation, from sports and business to medicine, science, arts and entertainment, government and military service, and making invaluable contributions to our city through their leadership and achievements. And whereas those contributions serve us to get us closer to having a more just and fair society, along with ensuring that the secured opportunities they created reach each others. Now therefore, I, John R. Heath, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month in our city, and invite all citizens to learn about our Jewish community while helping to preserve its future generations.
I entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved. Blake, second.
I call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Legislative agenda is approved by vote of three.
April, Michelle is online. You just can't see her, so you can also signal to her if you want her to be voting into.
Michelle?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes. How do you vote on the legislative agenda?
Aye. Sorry. I don't know what's going on with my audio.
Okay, the vote is four to zero. Thank you. Okay, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda by city clerk. Kim Nichols.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Not used to so few people being here today.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the April 3rd, 2023 closed session minutes, the April 10th, 2023 council meeting minutes and closed session minutes, and resolution number 3255 approving the appointment of Latanya Christopher to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending May 2026.
I call a motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The vote is four to zero. Is Latanya Christopher here today? If you are, would you please stand, and we thank you so much. We have a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved. Second.
Oh, hello. Good evening, council. First item this evening is an award of bid for contract RFP A-23-106. This is for the Live Production Services for the Department of Arts, Business and Culture. This provides a complete production package with staging, lights, audio, backline, crews and talent booking for the Maryland Folk Festival. Proposals went live on February 7th. Proposals were opened on March 23rd. We did receive two proposals. The highest-ranked proposer, who was responsive and responsible, was Team Productions out of Ocean City, Maryland, with a total of 97.67 points. The total cost for one year of services is $155,500. The GL account noted in your packet is fully funded to support that cost. This contract does include a renewal, excuse me, a renewal clause wherein the city reserves the right to renew all or portions of this contract with the same prices, terms and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon mutual agreement between the city and the supplier.
Are there any questions or comments?
None.
None.
Very good. The other two items are for declaration of surplus. They're both from the Salisbury Police Department. The details regarding both are in your packet. The first is for unit, which is a Chevrolet Express passenger van, unit 1201. It was a total loss insurance claim. The other is for our beloved K-9 Hank. He's being adopted by a private third party. That's everything.
Are there any questions or comments?
None for me.
On either one?
None.
All right.
Thank you.
All in favor of the award of bids signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the vice president votes aye.
Thank you, council.
Four to zero. Okay. This is new to me, y'all, right now, so I'm nervous kind of Florida. Resolutions are presented by our city administrator, Andy Kitsera.
Good evening, council.
Good evening. I make a motion to approve resolution 3256.
So moved. Second.
I have a resolution of the City of Salisbury to approve the city's action plan for community development block grant, CDBG funds for CDBG program year 2023. Whereas the Maryland State Office of the Housing Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has determined that the City of Salisbury qualifies as an entitlement community, and whereas the City of Salisbury is therefore entitled to receive community development block grant funds directed directly from each UD upon HUD's approval of the city's annual action plan, and whereas the council of the City of Salisbury wishes the city to receive this annual allotment of CDBG funds from HUD so that various community development projects may be completed, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to submit to HUD for review and approval on behalf of the City of Salisbury the 2023 CDBG action plan attached heretofore incorporated in hearing as Exhibit A, the annual action plan. Section 2 is intention of the mayor and the council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein, and the rest is boilerplate.
I'd like to call a motion to... Is there any questions or comments, first of all?
Just a comment about the action plan. It's well-developed, well-thought-out. Thank you.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye. Sorry, I can barely hear you guys.
And the president, vice president votes aye. Four to zero. Okay, a motion to approve resolution number 3257.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Sorry, Michelle, I know you're on a little bit of a delay there.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to approve property transfers connected to the Community Development Projects Fund, whereas during the past several years, the city has utilized various methods and procedures to tackle problems dilapidating the abandoned properties that exist throughout the city in order to get the properties back on the tax rolls, allow for donations of said properties to nonprofit entities valuable to the city's residents, or clean up said properties. And whereas the city acquired the following properties, 114 Tillman Street, Salisbury, Maryland, 220 Record Street, Salisbury, Maryland, and 141 Second Street, Salisbury, Maryland, a tax sale and foreclosed rights of the redemption to the properties thereby resulting in the city owning in said properties. And whereas the city has received and accepted donations of the following real properties, 806 North Division Street, 527 Wells Street, 524 East Isabella Street, from the owners of said properties thereby resulting in the city owning said properties. And whereas the Community Development Project Fund, CDPF, was a program established and budgeted by the city via ordinance number 2344, which was passed on July 27, 2015, and approved by Mayor James Irtan Jr. on July 30, 2015. And whereas ordinance number 2344, among other things, established a monetary fund for the purpose of purchasing and redeveloping troubled properties to return to the tax rolls or transfer to nonprofit entities. And whereas municipal charter SC 16-8 sets procedures for dealing with the sale or other dispositions of surplus obsolete or unused property. And whereas Chapter 2.36 of the municipal code details procedures for the city to handle surplus or unused real property. And whereas the city, excuse me, whereas the council upon recommendation of the director of procurement must approve the purchase, sale or donation of surplus real properties. And whereas the City Department of Procurement by memo to council dated March 14, 2016 requested that the following properties, all within the city limits, be deemed surplus, 2020 Record Street, 114 Tillman Street, 141 Second Street, 806 North Division Street, 527 Wells Street, 524 East Isabella Street, and 709 West Isabella Street. And whereas council approved their request to deem the aforementioned properties as city's surplus real property at its March 14, 2016 regular meeting. And whereas the following surplus properties have been sold, two deeds were executed by Ronald Strickler in his capacity as Director of Housing and Community Development, and one deed was executed by Mayor Jacob Day. Whereas the council desires to confirm that it consents to the three property sales and transfers and to formally prove the disposition of those surplus properties. And whereas the city also desires to approve the transfer of the following surplus properties, 527 Wells Street, which sale is pending, and whereas said properties formed part of the city's plan to be handled as properties that were considered to be part of the Community Development Projects Fund, but although were not part of the fund per se, were nonetheless approved by council to be deemed surplus real properties. And whereas the transfer of the aforementioned properties has allowed them to be returned to the tax rolls and/or to be sold to nonprofit entities, which is beneficial to the city's residents and which also have resulted in the removal of problem properties from the city's neighborhoods, also to the benefit of the city's residents. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the Council of the City of Salisbury finds its consent and approval of the following property sales of prior approved surplus real properties, two sales with deeds signed by Ronald Strickler Jr. in his capacity as Director of Housing and Community Development, which are 524 East Isabella Street, which was sold to Justin Fitton on March 31, 2022, and 2020 Record Street, which was sold to Young Investments Group LLC on August 12, 2022. And one sale, deed signed by Mayor Jacob Day, 114 Tillman Street, which was purchased by the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, Inc. on April 4, 2022. Section 2, the Council of the City of Salisbury also approves the transfer of 527 Wells, Salisbury, Maryland, and authorizes the Maryland mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to finalize the sale and transfer of said property. The remaining sections are boilerplate.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
Just a comment. I think that under this, the property on Cotton Tail was obtained by the city about four years ago. Ron got it. It was in some kind of foreclosure thing. Person had passed, the children were out of town, didn't want it or something. The city took it over, was able to clean it up a bit and resell it, and now there's a property owner in that property. So this is just an example of getting rid of blight and making it into a nice habital home.
I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution 3257 signify by saying aye.
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 And the vice president's aye. It's four to zero. Andy, public hearing? Call the motion to second, to approve CAR number 2023-1. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Charter amendment, resolution number 2023-1. A resolution to amend SC 2-2 and SC 20-1 of the city charter to change all references to the Board of Supervisors of Elections in the Charter to the City of Salisbury Election Board. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the city charter demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation and amendment to keep the provisions of the charter current, and whereas SC 2-2 and SC 20-1 of the charter refers to the City of Salisbury Election Board as the Board of Supervisors of Elections, which is a term no longer used by the city. And whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government 4-301@SEC@as amended in SC 21-2 of the charter to amend the charter not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality. And whereas the mayor and council find that amendments to SC 2-2 and SC 20-1 of the charter are desirable to update the charter. And whereas on January 6, 2023, the City of Salisbury Election Board convened in a public session to review potential amendments to the charter, incurred to offer advice and recommendations to the mayor and council about potential amendments and updates. And whereas on April 17, 2023, the mayor and council convened in public session to review potential amendments to the charter incurred resulting from the advice and recommendations of the City of Salisbury Election Board. And whereas the mayor and council have determined that amendments to SC 2-2 and SC 20-1 shall be adopted as set forth herein and now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury by virtue of the authority granted in Article XI-E of the Maryland Declaration of Rights 4-301@SEC of Local Government Articles of Code of Maryland and Article XXI of the City Charter as follows. Section 1, it is proposed and recommended that SC 2-2 be amended to repeal the language in the double brackets and adding the underscored and italicized language. I will reference line 45 instead of reading everything, where you can see Board of Supervisors of Elections are in the bold double brackets, replacing with City of Salisbury Election Flipping over to section 2, with the aforementioned proposed charter amendment, section SC 2-2 of the charter would read, "Council shall have resided in Salisbury for at least one year immediately preceding their election, and the council members from each district shall reside in the boundaries of the district from which they are to be elected on the date of filing for election, must continue to reside there during the term to which they are elected, must be at least 21 years of age, and shall be qualified registered voters of the city. The City of Salisbury Election Board shall be the judge of the qualifications of the candidates for city council." Section 3, it is proposed and recommended that SC 20-1 be amended to repeal the language in double-bolted brackets and adding the underscored and italicized language, referencing line 63. In 62 and 63, you see the Board of Supervisors of Elections being replaced by the City of Salisbury Election Board. Section 4, with this proposed charter amendment, section 20-1 of the charter would read, "The following persons before entering upon the duties of their offices shall make oath before the clerk in the city circuit court of Wycomica County that they will be diligently and faithfully, without partiality, favor or prejudice, well and true, perform the duties of their office, the mayor, the members of the council, the city administrator, the director of finance, the city clerk, the city solicitor, the members of the City of Salisbury Election Board, the judges of election, the heads of all offices, departments and agencies of the city government and such. Other officers and employees of the city as the council may require. Each of it shall be recorded in the office of the clerk of the city circuit court for Wycomica County. A certificate of each of it shall be returned by him to the council and shall be recorded in its proceedings of the council. Either of these records or certified copy of either of them, under sale, may be used as evidence in any court in the state of Maryland." Continuing, "And be it further resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Section 5 pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-304, a public hearing on this resolution providing for the amendment of the City of Salisbury's charter has set forth here and shall be and hereby is scheduled for May 8, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Section 6 pursuant to the City of Salisbury SC 21-2 and Maryland Code Local Government 4-304, the city shall post a complete and exact copy of this charter amendment at the city government building for at least 40 days after the passage of this resolution and advertise that a fair summary of this resolution, the newspaper of general circulation in the city for at least four times at weekly intervals and within 45 days after the resolution has been adopted. Section 7, the title of this resolution shall be deemed a fair summary of the amendments provided for here and for publication for all other purposes." Believe the rest is boilerplate.
Is there anyone here willing to speak in the public hearing? If so, you need to stand and be sworn in.
And that's regarding to just this?
Yeah, just this. Just these resolutions.
If you want to talk about the election, you're...
Is there anyone willing to speak? I will now open the public hearing, and I will repeat again, is there anyone willing to speak? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. I call for the vote.
You need to wait for Begon.
Oh, man. Oh, I didn't even know she went out.
Yeah, she went to the lady.
Okay. I could call for the vote. All in favor of the charter amendment resolution? Please signify by saying aye.
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 And the vice president votes aye? The vote is four to zero. Charter amendment number 2023-2. Andy?
Got it. Charter amendment resolution.
Wait a minute, I have to call for a motion to approve. Call for us to approve.
So moved. Second.
Charter amendment resolution number 2023-2. A resolution to amend SC 6-11 of the city charter to conform with state election laws, whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the city charter demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation and amendment to keep the provisions of the charter current. And whereas 10-311 of the elections law article of Maryland Antiquated Code authorizes candidates, political parties and other groups supporting or opposing a candidate or question on the ballot, as well as the state and local boards of elections to designate registered voters as challengers or watchers. And whereas she can form with 10-311 of the election law article, SC 6-11 of the city charter should be amended as set forth herein. And whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury are authorized by Maryland Code, the Local Government 4-301@SEC as amended in SC 21-2 of the charter to amend the charter not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland but public law or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality. And whereas the mayor and council find that amendments set forth herein, SC 6-11 of the charter are desirable to update the charter and conform with state law. And whereas on January 6, 2023, the City of Salisbury Election Board convened in public session to review potential amendments to the charter, incurred to offer advice and recommendations to the mayor and council about potential amendments and updates. And whereas on April 17, 2023, the mayor and council convened in public session to review potential amendments to the charter and code resulting from the advice and recommendations of the City of Salisbury Election Board. And, excuse me, and whereas the mayor and council have determined that amendments in SC 6-11 shall be adopted as set forth herein and now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury by virtue of the authority granted in Article XI-E of the Maryland Declaration of Rights 4-301@SEC of the Local Government Article of the Code of Maryland and Articles XXI of the City Charter as follows. Section 1, it is proposed and recommended that SC 6-11 be amended to repeal the language in the double brackets and adding the underscored italicized language. We're removing representing the candidates in their city in any city election. That's in line 42, line 43 and 44. The several voting places during the voting and counting of the ballots are as provided by the law with respect to general elections. Adding in line 44, "Each place of registration and election in accordance with the state law." With the proposed charter amendment, section SC 6-11, the charter would read as follows, "Challengers and watchers shall be allowed to be present at each place of registration and election in accordance with state law. And be it further resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury." Section 3 pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-304, a public hearing on this resolution provided for the amendment of the City of Salisbury charter as set forth here and shall be and hereby is scheduled for May 8, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. I think that's... The rest is standard.
Is anyone willing to speak in the public hearing? If so, stand and be sworn in by our city clerk, Kim Nichols. I will now open the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. I call for the vote of the motion. All in favor of the resolution, the charter amendment resolution 2023-2? resolution, the charter amendment resolution twenty twenty-three dash two, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Vice president votes aye, it's four to zero.
So sorry, April, just real quick, I know we have a couple of members here in the audience, the Salisbury Election Board, I just want to thank them for their time. We really appreciate the work you did on this.
I call for the motion to second, to motion and second to approve charter amendment resolution twenty twenty-three dash three.
So moved.
And to present.
Charter amendment resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three, a resolution to amend SC six dash three H of the city charter to challenge, excuse me, to change the reference to the Board of Supervisors of Elections in the charter to the City of Salisbury Election Board and to remove their random sampling requirement of verifying signatures on a recall petition. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the city charter demonstrates a need for its periodic review evaluation amendment to keep the provisions of the charter current. And whereas SC six dash thirteen H of the charter refers to the City of Salisbury Election Board as the Board of Supervisors of Elections, which is a term no longer used by the city. Whereas SC six dash thirteen H requires that with a petition to recall an elected official, the City of Salisbury Election Board and the city clerk shall verify the appropriate number of qualified registered voters, signatures, addresses, districts, and in addition, conduct a random sampling of ten percent of the signatures to compare with voter registration cards. And whereas if a petition complies, SC six dash thirteen D, as reasonably determined by the City of Salisbury Election Board and city clerk, they shall not also be required to conduct a random sampling of ten percent of the signatures to compare with voter registration cards. And whereas the mayor of council of the City of Salisbury are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government, four dash three zero one at sec as amended, and SC twenty-one dash two of the charter to amend the charter, not contrary to the constitution of Maryland, public general law or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality. And whereas the mayor and council find that amendments to SC six dash thirteen H of the charter are desirable to update the charter. And whereas on January sixth, twenty twenty-three, the City of Salisbury Election Board convened in public session to review potential amendments to the charter and code to offer advice and recommendations to the mayor and council upon potential amendments and updates. And whereas on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the mayor and council convened in public session to review potential amendments to the charter code resulting from the advice and recommendations of the City Salisbury Election Board. And whereas the mayor and council have determined that amendments to SC six dash thirteen shall be adopted as set forth herein, now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Salisbury by virtue of the authority granted in Article XI dash E of the Maryland Declaration of Rights, four dash three zero one at sec of the local government article of the code of Maryland and Articles XXI of the city charters as follows, section one. It is proposed and recommended that SC six dash thirteen be amended to repeal the language in double bolded brackets and adding the underscored and italicized language. So line fifty-one, fifty and fifty-one, we're removing city board of election supervisors in line fifty-one, adding the City of Salisbury Election Board. And then we are removing, in addition to the computer verification, this is in line fifty-three and fifty-four, in addition to the computer verification program, a random sampling of ten percent of the signatures shall be compared with their voter registration Section two with the aforementioned proposed charter amendment, section SC six dash thirteen of the charter would read, upon receipt of the petition, the mayor and council shall forward the petition to the City of Salisbury Election Board and the city clerk for the verification of the appropriate number of qualified registered voters, signatures, addresses, and districts. The board and the city clerk shall return said petition with their written findings as to required signatories, sorry, excuse me, signatory addresses, districts to the mayor and council at the council meeting following the expiration of thirty calendar days. And at its meeting, if the petition is authenticated, the mayor and council shall announce that within thirty days, a public hearing will be held on the petition to allow the initiator and the official being recalled an opportunity to speak, and that within forty-five days of authentication, a reinformation vote shall be held in order to allow, in the case of the mayor, all qualified registered voters of the city to vote on the petition, and in the case of a council member, all qualified registered voters of his or her district to vote on the petition. Finally, and be further resolved by the council of the City of Salisbury, section three pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government, four dash three zero four, a public hearing on this resolution provided for the amendment of the City of Salisbury charter set forth here and shall be hereby scheduled for May eighth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. The rest is standard.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing? You need to stand and be sworn in. I will now open the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. We're going to call for the vote, call for the vote of all in favor of the charter amendment resolution, signify by saying aye.
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 And the vice president votes aye, the vote is four to zero. I would like to announce that the charter amendments that were read this evening, the resolutions number twenty twenty-three dash one, twenty twenty-three dash two, and twenty twenty-three dash three will all become effective on June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Ordinance number twenty-eight zero two, I'm calling for...
Madam, may I, may I? For the next four ordinances to still be read, and do you want to do, if people want to make a public comment on all of them, or just wait for each one and then they can speak and be sworn in on each one?
Just wait till the very last one.
Okay.
Yeah, just wait till the very last one.
Did you call a motion to read that? I'm sorry.
Yes. I'd like to call a motion to, motion to move and second to approve the ordinances of resolutions that we're reading.
So moved.
Good evening, everyone. Ordinance number two eight zero two, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland for the period July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period, and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule A, operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four, to fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule B, capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for the capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule C, anticipated grant expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that the tax levy be and the same be hereby set at one dollar point one three three two per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for all commercial real property, properties assigned by Sstat land use codes, C R, C C, C, C A, I, and A at point nine eight three two cents per one hundred of assessed valuation of all other real property at three dollars and fifty-one cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for all personal property characterized as utilities, and at two dollars and forty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for all other personal properties subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes exclusive of revenues derived from the water and sewer fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities, and all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July one, twenty twenty-three, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title fourteen of the tax property article of the annotated code of Maryland as amended. And then included in the agenda is Schedule A, Schedule B, Schedule C.
Okay, I'd like to call a motion, all in favor of resolution, the ordinance twenty-eight oh two, signify by saying aye.
We're gonna open the public.
Go ahead, just finish it off.
So we need to swear in?
Okay.
Individually.
Is there anyone that would love to speak in the public hearing? Public hearing is now open. If you will stand, you sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Robert Taylor. I'm a fifty-year, fifty-one year now, resident of the city and taxpayer. And I've practiced law here for about fifty years. I'm pretty much retired now. That's why I don't look like a lawyer tonight. Actually, I've been working outside, didn't have a chance to get cleaned up. But there are a number of problems with this proposed budget ordinance. The most significant, from a purely procedural standpoint, is the fact that there's no list of revenue that goes with the ordinance. There is a list of expenditures, which mirrors the mayor's proposed budget, but if you will look at the ordinance, there is no list of where the revenue is going to come from. There's no reference to the mayor's budget. It's not incorporated by reference. There is simply nothing that states where the revenue is going to come from. And of course, that's the big problem this year, in addition, of course, to the level of expenditures. Because you've got to have a balanced budget, and to do that, you have to have a list of your expenditures, which you don't have. The charter, city charter, I forget the particular sections, but I've sent you all a memo on that, I believe that was yesterday, actually says you have to have a list of the expenditures, and they have to balance. And I haven't looked at the state law, the local government article on that, but I'm pretty sure that probably somewhere in the part that pertains to municipalities, it says the same thing. So that's the first point. The second point is that what has been proposed by the mayor to include a fire EMS, it's referred to in the budget, it's referred to in the mayor's budget message as a fire and life safety fee, is simply unlawful. And I say that with some authority. I indicated I have been a lawyer for fifty years. And during that period of time, I had a case, not here in this county, but in Worcester County, bearing on a fee that was being charged, happened to be the town of Ocean City, which needed some more tax revenue about thirty years ago. And instead of raising taxes, which they can do, I mean, and you can do too, they decided to increase their building permit fees, use that as a revenue generator, more than what was the cost of administering building permit. They increased it, as I recall, by a factor of ten, ten times. We challenged that for a contractor in Ocean City who had several fairly large condos, where he had paid those fees to be able to get going and get started, and protested, went to the Maryland Tax Court, went to the circuit court in Worcester County, and it went to the, what was then the Maryland Court of Special Appeals. They changed the name last year, I forget what it is, some goofy name. But in any event, he managed to get back, it was in seven figures, because it was deemed to be an illegal tax. The reason being, you can only impose a fee for what is being paid for by the fee. For example, water and sewer fees. You have a long list of fees you're going to approve. And I'm guessing, I don't know for sure, I haven't looked at them, that they probably bear a reasonable relationship to the cost of administering the particular service. An example would be a dog license fee.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
You have four minutes, and I'll apologize for not explaining that to you before you spoke.
Say again.
You have four minutes to speak.
Okay, from now or from when?
Uh-uh, from when you started.
Okay, well, I haven't been keeping time, so, you know.
You're over the limit.
Well, in any event, I mean, there are a lot of problems with this budget. And I would encourage the council to have another public hearing when it has these problems straightened out. There's going to have to be major revision in this budget, either a large tax increase or a large reduction in expenditures at one end of the spectrum or another, or you're going to have to come together with some happy medium. But what's being proposed is, number one, incomplete, and number two, is not going to bear any relation to reality for your final budget. Thank you.
May I just make a couple of comments that'll probably help with the whole process? So we, if, last Monday night, when we had our budget session, which was a public meeting, we discussed some of these items that are being brought up right now, understanding that this public hearing must go off of our first reading, what was adopted. But for just everybody's edification, what was proposed at the budget session, which is where we're sitting at right now, so people can comment on what is or what has been the new agreement right now that we're talking about, is the fire and life safety fee as proposed at three hundred dollars. That idea of a fire and life safety fee has been tabled and will not be implemented in this year's budget. The commercial property tax rate that was proposed at fifteen cents has been reduced to ten, well, point one zero six eight, so essentially ten cents, for the new rate of one point zero nine. Additionally, and in lieu of a fire and life safety fee for the residents, we are proposing a property tax increase of that same matching amount of commercial, which is point one zero six eight. So there is proposed property tax increases, but no fire and life safety fee, no adjustments made to the water and sewer fee of twelve percent. Additionally, there was nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars recommended to be cut from the mayor's proposed budget based off these reductions and fees that are being proposed.
My name's Colin Zimmerman. I represent the Coastal Association of Realtors, thousand members, and I'm also a city resident. First and foremost, I think you ought to stop this entirely and schedule a new hearing. I think as council members, you should be irate that you have publicized a hearing that says there's going to be no tax increase, and now there's a ten percent tax increase to city residents. Effectively, everybody here just heard no tax increase, and nobody stood up to talk because they all thought that was fine. And now everyone's going to sit there and not be able to talk because you didn't get sworn in, and yet you're going to sit there with a ten percent tax increase to all residential property. I have a litany of problems with residential tax increase of ten percent. First and foremost, of how it's going to affect the people of the city, the residents of the city, specifically the most vulnerable portion of the city, renters and people living on fixed incomes. People are not prepared for a ten percent increase. They're just not. A ten percent increase can happen, but it has to happen over a period of time. There has to be planning. There has to be a knowledge that it's coming, and we need time, years, to figure it. And the fact that it wasn't done years ago is not the citizens' fault. Okay? You can't pass it to the citizens that it didn't happen several years ago. But what you can do is say, this is how we're going to move forward, and we can work with both the property owners, the citizens, and the business community on a reasonable way to move forward as a community. We all understand that there are needs. We all understand that the city has needs, but you are looking at a twelve percent increase in water. You're looking at a ten percent property increase. You're looking at a massive increase in assessed value to properties. And that's going to go up over the next two years as well, because it's a three-year. So a lot of property owners are going to get hit with a... So a lot of property owners are going to get hit with a major tax bill if they're not in, and a lot of these people are on fixed incomes and a lot of these are people are renters and that's going to get passed on and the water's going to get passed on. So you are looking at a giant increase in fees and costs to people who are not having giant increases to their salaries and are not prepared for this. And it's not their fault that the city didn't plan better and it's not that their fault that there may have been some mismanagement in the past. It is not their fault that the city has not done their job to do due diligence and get it done. What it is, is a, an opportunity to work with the citizens of Salisbury to come up with a reasonable solution. It's going to be some give on our side and some give on your side and we are more than willing as a community, and I'll speak for the realtors and I'll speak for the business community, to sit down at the table and come up with a reasonable solution. We know taxes will happen, but we want to see how we can do it and plan it out so that everybody has a reasonable way of doing it. 15%, I guess it's 10% now, to, to commercial is a big hit to commercial. 10% of residential is a huge hit to residential. So there's got to be a better way, there's got to be a better alternative. I highly suggest you go back to the drawing board and I highly suggest you give the citizens of Salisbury a chance to actually talk on this issue because quite frankly, nobody knows what's going on and we are feeling like we are just being duped on this.
Excuse me, but I did say, I said, ask anyone willing to speak. But, but I said, anyone willing to speak, please stand and be sworn in.
We can still...
Excuse me? I can't hear you.
You can, we're not, it's okay if they want to get sworn in.
They didn't get sworn in. I mean, but we didn't...
Well, we didn't know.
Madam Vice President, if I might, I think they should have the opportunity to speak after, but I would also, I would also like to make a couple of comments that may clarify some things as well.
Okay, sure, you're fine.
So if you, please bear with me for a minute, okay? It gives none of us any pleasure to do what we've suggested we have to do, I will tell you. But I do want to give you some, some figures that may help the situation, at least you understanding why it has become a critical and catastrophic type event. First of all, the fire service agreement between the city and the county, let me explain and give you some facts. Our fire department budget is 15, approximately $15 million, 14 six something, well, round it off to 15 for easy math. We service, how many people in here understand that we service not only the city limits, but we service outside the city limits? Okay, good, you understand that. 5,000 of the calls that we make are outside of the city limits. Our budget is $15 million. Logical math tells you that one-third, 5,000 calls of 15,000 calls that we have is a third. A third of our budget is $5 million. The county has offered us for the last three years, $1 million. One million.
That's not right.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is that the emotion that is in this room right now needs to also go to the county council because if we didn't have to raise if $4 million, we wouldn't have to raise taxes. That's a fact. Not to mention the fact, how many people here are fed up with paying dual taxes? Okay? We pay for our own roads department. We pay the county for all the roads in the county. We take care of the city roads. They do not take care of the city roads. We're being taxed twice for that, those residents that are in the city. That has to be brought to the county. It's time that we stand up together and ask for what we deserve and what we've not been getting for years and years and years. I'm a business guy. I'm not a politician and there's only way, and Mr. Taylor, you're right, we have to have a balanced budget. We have no choice. When you talk about inflation, we are subject to the same inflation that everybody in this room is getting and seeing. I'll give you one example. The chemicals that are used in our water have gone up 26% for the same volume of chemicals that we did, we used last year. We've cut a million dollars out of our budget that we proposed to make this a balanced budget, which includes the tax increases. So it gives me no pleasure to do this and it's not political. And yes, the county does have a part to play in this. I would suggest that this group, along with twice or three times as many, go to the council meetings and demand that we get our fair share. This is not, we cannot survive at this rate. And also please remember that in the last two years during COVID, we received $4.5 million of ARP funds that are gone and we have to make that up. I'm sorry it happened, but I tell you, we have no alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. With the three ladies that wanted to be sworn, would you please stand and our city clerk will swear you in.
I solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but...
There's others that won't speak on this issue.
On this same issue?
Yeah.
Well, you should have stand.
You're talking about the fee issue, is that correct? Maybe now change to something else?
Why don't you stand and get sworn in and then speak when you need to speak.
Anybody else? Anybody that needs to stand, should be standing right now.
If you want to speak.
If you want to speak.
Okay.
Now, these are not for the actual, in public comments. This is for now. So we'll understand now that we're doing, actually, these ordinances that are here.
April, I just have, there's a gentleman in the back and I think this is what's being reflected across the room. Could we just for a second explain the two, because we're seeing fee intermittently when we're talking about two different issues. There's a fire fee and then there's the, the water and sewer rate discussion.
Sure.
And there are a couple of people here that are misunderstanding the public hearing and the public comment option today.
Okay, yeah, hopefully I can help. Because there are two billing mechanisms, a fee resides in ordinance number two eight zero four as part of our fee schedule and ordinance two eight zero two, which was just read, is where you talk about taxes. Because they are intertwined, I think it's best if anybody wants to talk about pretty much anything on these four subjects, it's going to be best to just go ahead and get sworn in now so you could talk about it because they're all very interrelated. When we get into the water and sewer rate tax increase, it is a very specific one that will be read here in a minute, but feel free to wait or talk now about any of the recommended increases.
Council President April, I would suggest that I read, read the other ordinances and then at the very end.
Are we allowed?
We suggested that in the beginning.
Yeah, in the beginning.
I'm not sure.
Then we have to have a...
I think we have to technically for each one, yeah.
You have to do each one.
We do.
Yeah, you do.
People can just reserve their right to speak to the last one if they choose to.
Okay.
They changed it to a 10% property tax. It's no longer a fee, it's now a property tax.
Because I went to the end of that, and got the budget and that wasn't in the budget. Okay, for ordinance...
So you're right. So again, right, right, so that would be republished. So this is a moving target. It's very unique this year where what was presented in the mayor's budget a couple weeks ago that aligns with the public hearing has changed a couple of times and may get further changed, but what would happen is if there is a decision by council this evening or at the budget session next Monday to adopt a property tax increase, whether it's 10 cents, 5 cents, 30 cents, doesn't matter, if it's different than what was already published, we would have to republish that to let everybody know what is going on. So that is happening. Additionally, knowing that this is moving, we have actually moved back our second reading off of May 24th to June 12th to buy more time for us to be able to have more of a dialogue and conversation. We're not trying to rush this through or to hide it from people. We know there's a process and it's kind of messy right now, but we want to make sure people understand what's going on.
And we're also hoping that the county steps up because that could change this whole thing again.
Yes.